Hello?
There we go. Welcome to our evening seven o'clock session of the City Council. Madam Clerk?
The record will show that all members are present.
Close session report from the City Attorney?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, even though the City Attorney has nothing to report from our close session, I would like to make a little statement on behalf of the Council. We did take under review the issue with regard to the tennis court property located on Coast Highway that had been considered for a possible acquisition by the city for a new city hall site based upon at the time or based at the time we looked at that property or entered into discussions about that property, we were led to believe by the property owners or at least a number of them, and there are multiple property owners for that piece of property, that they were interested in selling the property to the city and they expressed that interest to us. Subsequently, they decided that they were not interested in selling and we've decided that if they're not interested in selling, we are not interested in buying it and we will not be trying to take that property by any form of eminent domain. So hopefully that'll put that business to rest. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. And why don't we have Councilmember Gardner lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be led by Jim DeBoome, Newport Mesa Interfaith Council.
On behalf of the Newport Mesa Irvine Interfaith Council, I bring you greetings. In the 2007 year, we can bow our head in a moment of prayer. We begin a new year with new hope, new leadership for our community, with new challenges that we will face, but thankful for the city in which we live and play and work. We're thankful for those who've gone before us, those first responders who serve us, the men and women in the armed services who protect our freedoms. We ask that you help us to rise to the challenges that 2007 places before us, whether we're elected officials or city employees or citizens of the community. Help us to be the best that we can be.
Thank you, Jim. Presentations, our first presentation will be by Marion Bergerson. Mary, want to come down? Welcome.
I'm Marion Bergerson, Newport Beach, and it's a pleasure to come before the Council, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. It's wonderful to be able to see all of you, all seven of you, and I am most delighted to be able to present a progress report on the Marion Bergerson pool at the Corona Damar High School. But first of all, I would like to personally thank the Council for your support and we deeply appreciate your challenge grant and we think that we have met your requirements and that's what we're going to talk about. But in particular, I'd like to especially thank Assemblywoman, moving up here, Councilwoman Leslie Daigle and her strong guidance and I think her involvement from the very beginning has been so helpful, wonderful support from the staff. We've just been so pleased to be able to work with the staff in the way that we have. And Wes Morgan and I could name two or three, but I don't want to leave anyone out, but all the staff that has worked with us, Marie, when before she had left, it was just really, it was inspirational to see the kind of cooperation that exists and we truly appreciate it. And I also have to give a word of thanks to our very, very capable Angela Cross. She has really been magnificent in being able to put all this in fashion, what she has between the schools and the city. And I think it is truly, it's a tremendous mark of what I would consider complete cooperation between the city and the schools and we know how important that is because our citizens are all our citizens, whether they have kids in schools, whether they don't have kids in schools, they all use our facilities. And so again, thank you so much, it's really gratifying. But I'd like to give you a quick overview of where we are, some of the improvements and particularly relating to the replastering and repair of the pool. The architectural and engineering firm has been engaged by the Newport Mesa Unified School District and the project has been evaluated and the scope of the project has been defined and that includes the replastering of the pool and the repair of the deck and the broken pieces of pile that are missing. And also importantly, replacing the cantilever deck from the water's edge to first expansion joint around the entire perimeter of the pool, repairing the damage around the perimeter of pool. And that cost estimate is going to increase by perhaps $500,000 to approximately total of $750,000 due to the replacement of the cantilever deck and that is to avoid replastering twice. The deck repair must be part of the replastering project, so that is something that had to be done at this time. And the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board of Education will be asking to approve finding additional, funding additional costs at their January 23 meeting and we are anticipating that that will be approved. The target date to start is March 2007 and the completion date is approximately early May 2007 and of course that's subject to confirmation with the Newport Mesa Unified School District. So there is another improvement, which is the shade structures and those of you that have had kids or yourself, it's nice to have in the summer to have that shade and I'm sure it'd be appreciated greatly by those that participate. With a meeting currently, I think it's this Thursday, with the vendor and the Newport Mesa Unified School District personnel to review the requirements and obtain the proposal fundraising. Now as far as the community campaign, of course, that's what we've been meeting, our obligation that we stress that this was going to be our obligation to make your challenge. We have launched, starting Thanksgiving, by email, website, direct solicitation letters and so far we have received over $100,000 in cash and we have many more in pledges. We have meetings with prospective major donors, they're scheduled late January, and we have gala dinner for 300 at the Pacific Club, which is on March 3 and we intend to raise $100,000 at that event. And promotion activities are ongoing. We have ads slated for the February issue of Newport Navigator to reach the Newport Beach aquatics community and efforts are going to continue for outreach to prospective major individual and corporate donors. And we're also working on appearances on local cable television stations to promote the project and also daily pilot ads and publicity and we appreciate very much the publicity that they have been giving us. So in conclusion, as to the status of the challenge pledge, if the Newport Mesa School District approves additional funding, the challenge pledge will have been met, $750,000 from the school district plus the community funds and the city of Newport Beach can coordinate dispersment of challenge funds with the Newport Mesa School District after January 23, 2007 and that is when the school district after they have taken action and we look forward to that and we'll be in close communication. So thank you very much for your attention, we do appreciate your support and look forward to many hours of lapse in the new aquatic rehabilitation center. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Please don't leave because you're the subject of our next presentation and I would like to applaud your work. Hopefully maybe we can get you involved with some other fundraising efforts since you've done such a good job. Don't leave. Stand there. We have a little something for you. Some of you may know or may not know, Marion has been involved with state and local government for a long, long time, not, I won't say how long, but currently you're Chairman of the California Transportation Commission, is that accurate? And some of you also may be aware that the city recently purchased a 15 acre piece of property at the corner of Superior and Pacific Coast Highway, known as the Sunset Ridge Park, which we've been actively pursuing for a number of years, even before I got on the City Council. It's a major acquisition for the city and a city that could always use an extra park or two and we have big plans for the piece of property, but we would like to give special recognition to Marion for her assistance in helping us acquire that. The transaction did require the approval of the Transportation Commission and she was very instrumental in helping the city negotiate that deal and convincing her fellow commissioners that it was the right thing to do. And so with that, we have a little plaque here that we put together and I'll come down and present it to you.
Thank you. And while the mayor's coming down. Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to add, never have I seen such patience and endurance as was indicated both by Steve and Dave Kiff, of course, has been just marvelous throughout the entire process, working with the staff, not only with Caltrans or with the commission staff and all those that were perhaps impeding many of the good things that should have happened a lot sooner. But thank you for your good help, appreciate it a lot.
Actually, yeah, Dave, we'll bookend it here. Okay, there you go.
Thanks.
Thank you, Marion.
The acquisition of Sunset Ridge Park is really a milestone because this is going to be an opportunity for us to build a active park with more ball fields and soccer fields so that this is something that is really needed on the westerly side of the bay, so that this is something that our recreational needs are not going to be completely fulfilled by it, but at least this will add to fulfilling the vacancy that we have of fields on the west side of the bay.
And I just want to thank Marion Bergerson for all of her leadership in helping us with our aquatics and our baseball fields and our soccer fields, all really important facilities for our community. So thank you very much and also Angela for all of your leadership on this project.
Okay. Next is a declaration of tsunami readiness by, of the city by the National Weather Service.
Good evening, Mayor Rosansky and Councilmembers. My name is Jim Purpura. I am the meteorologist in charge for the National Weather Service covering Orange County. Our office is located in San Diego and we cover, we cover all of the county here in Orange County. Very happy tonight to be able to present storm ready and tsunami ready recognition on the city of Newport Beach and have a little letter, wanted to read part of it. We have a letter, we have a certificate and we also have highway signs that the city will be presented with as well. On behalf of the San Diego Storm Ready and Tsunami Ready Advisory Board, I would like to congratulate you on your jurisdiction storm ready and tsunami ready jurisdiction. It is clearly the result of your vision, leadership, hard work and commitment to the city, the citizens of Newport Beach. They should take great pride and comfort in having achieved this status and to a great degree they have you to thank for it. The current storm ready tsunami ready recognition for Newport Beach will be valid for three years and expiring on December 8, 2009. Recommend applying in advance for renewed recognition. As a storm ready and tsunami ready jurisdiction, you're authorized to use the storm ready tsunami ready logo in official letterheads, brochures or other suitable documents and we have digital files of this image available. Also wanted to have the chief come up, he had a few remarks about the recognition process.
Thank you, Jim. Member Rosansky, Councilmembers, thank you. When I first came to Newport Beach, I heard about the process that was starting to become tsunami ready and it was very surprisingly nice for me because I know that in most of the other cities in LA County, none of them are even approaching to come around and doing anything. There's over 100 cities along the coast in California and there is only five cities who are taking the responsibility upon Newport Beach being one of those. So it's very nice to see what's being done by the National Weather Service tackling this responsibility to really assist communities in addressing this situation. I think most of us realize this acknowledgement that we're getting from them really is just saying that we've initiated the process, we're beginning it, it is in fact, we talked earlier, it is not the destination or the very end, we've checked the box and put it on the shelf. As Jim has said to me, it's really the beginning of a journey, not a destination and we will begin to proceed to move forward and look at the things that we need to do in the future. I think that we have had a past experience in 2005, I believe, when the evacuation was going to take place, but a lot of things have happened since then in making sure that we are ready. We actually now have a tsunami plan, which has maps identifying inundation areas, predetermined evacuation routes, it considers the evacuation of persons with limited or no transportation, traffic flow patterns and procedures, predetermined shelter locations, community notification procedures, pre-identifying convalescent homes and hospitals in the inundation areas, specific roles and responsibility for each public safety department. We've added weather radios to all of our warning points, fire stations, police and city hall facilities. We place signs on all of the evacuation routes down on the beaches and we develop an education program for all fifth graders in the public schools. We'll actually be here in the public, in the council chambers on December 16 at 6:00 to 7:30 on, did I say December? Excuse me, thank you, Council. January 16, I'm a little nervous, my birthday's coming up on the 18th and I'm turning 55 and I'm a little nervous about that, but actually our emergency coordinator, Katie Freeman, is going to be here leading that and will be one of many that we're going to have in the future. It won't be the last one that we have. You can actually access any information on disaster preparedness on the Newport Beach City website and tsunami specific can find it also there. Again, it's my responsibility to make sure that we get, disseminate this information out and that's a task that will come upon me in the years to come to make sure, because I know it's a concern of many people, how to get that information out in a safe and effective way and an efficient way and that will fall upon me to make sure that I do that because obviously all those that are living in that area want to have that information and we're going to do everything possible to make sure that we can do that as quickly and as efficiently as possible. But again, for me, it's nice to come to a city that is on the leading edge. Over 100 cities in California and there's only five that are storm tsunami ready, we're one of those five. And Orange County actually will be probably the first county in the state that will have all of the cities within probably a month to be tsunami ready, storm tsunami ready. So that's actually quite an accomplishment. It's nice to be working.
Chief?
Excuse me?
What would we do different now, if there's a tsunami warning now, because that happened during a council meeting, I remember, what would we do different now than we did a couple years ago with this?
Well, I think that as far as notification, one of those things that we do is that all of the fire, police, all of our access individuals that would go out on the peninsula and in those low areas would start making those notifications to individuals. We do in fact in the process right now of a notification system, we are addressing and looking at to make the phone calls out like a reverse 911. We do not have that capability, but it's pretty close to making sure that we can start accessing and doing that and it's in the, MIS is working on that right now to make sure that we can do it. It truly is leading edge technology. I know everybody wants instantaneous notification. Nobody is there yet, but it's in the process of developing that. Pretty much now it's mostly using the radio systems, television, any capability that we have, all the fire engines will go up and down those areas trying to move people out. A lot of it has to do with, is it instantaneous or do we have two, three, four hours warning? Makes a big difference. And so those are all things that here in the future that we're going to have to look at, but it's pretty much outlined in the plan and we'll keep moving forward. I think most of people want a phone system or a system that will notify people in a readily amount of time to get that out and I think that's something we're developing right now. We have the capability, we've bought the software for it and MIS is actually developing it, so we're looking into that. It's leading edge technology, it's tough, trying to move people off an island in a quick, effective way, you can ask the PD, it's tough to do, but it's, at least we're addressing the problem. I can tell you that many cities aren't even addressing it, so. I wanted to thank too, all the, all the effort and effort that was being put forth was through Katie Freeman over here. I came, kind of came in on the coattails of that, so she is the one putting forth pretty much all the effort, so most of the effort goes to her and I want to thank her for that, so.
Mike, did you have something to add?
Yes, as a resident of the peninsula and speaking for District One in particular, I applaud your efforts and the department's efforts to make this much progress. I think it's tremendous and you're really to be congratulated. The key thing in my mind going forward is that this is a process, it's a never-ending process and the real issue will be, and the real mark of success for us will be, when we can talk to a resident randomly on the street, on the peninsula, and they understand, they've seen the plan and they understand what to do and how to respond. So it has to start, of course, with city staff and their organizing ability and the ability to communicate with each other and know what to do, but our success won't be fully achieved until the citizens all know exactly what to do.
Absolutely.
So I applaud you and I look forward to supporting those efforts.
Thank you very much.
Nancy?
January 16 is the first of your community outreach meetings.
Workshops, we've had, we've had numerous ones before, but this is the first one we're going to have workshop right here in the council chambers, starting at 6:00.
And how is that going to be publicized besides us talking about it tonight and a sign on the door over there?
There's a banner right out in front of city, the council chambers, there's also a banner on Baboa Island. We've tried to reach out to all the homeowners associations, giving them the flyer. We've put it in the newspaper twice, so we've really tried to get the word out that we're having this presentation and due to attendance and if there is a demand for more, which I assume there will be, we will be having more presentations of this type.
But we're also, the emphasis should be on being proactive and really going out after the people. We can't expect them always to come in here, so that's going to be part of it, I assume.
I think that's the task that I'm with, is trying to find those ways to be proactive and not sit back and wait. We'll go out and find ways to make sure we do that.
Very good. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Katie, and thank you, Jim. We have two presentations. First is the certificate of achievement for the city and then second, we have the signs, the tsunami ready and storm ready signs.
Okay, thank you very much. And our next and last presentation will be made by Peggy Fort on behalf of the restaurant, Newport Beach Restaurant Association. I believe that we have a special week starting soon here, Restaurant Week?
We sure do. Thank you very much, Mayor Rosansky, members of council, city staff, and Happy New Year. Again, my name's Peggy Fort, I'm a resident of the Baboa Peninsula and it's my pleasure to be here tonight to represent the Newport Beach Restaurant Association and inviting everyone to Newport Beach Restaurant Week. It is the inaugural Restaurant Week celebration for Newport Beach and where the Restaurant Association has produced a citywide culinary celebration to invite the public to come out and try some new restaurants, maybe an old favorite, during January 21st through the 25th. Over close to 75 restaurants will be preparing three course fixed price menus for $1,295 for lunch and $2,695 for dinner. So the Restaurant Association just wanted to take this opportunity to invite the viewing public and the people here at the council to attend the celebration. Additionally, while I have a chance, on behalf of the Restaurant Association, we would like to extend our sincere appreciation and thanks to the Newport Beach City Council, the city manager and the city staff for their support in trying to get this inaugural campaign launched. The Restaurant Association really values the partnership with the city. In addition to that, the Newport Beach Conference and Visitors Bureau was a key community partner as well as the Los Angeles Times Community News and the Daily Pilot. We had a number of corporate sponsors and other community sponsors, which I don't need to mention media sponsors, but we're just really looking forward to the first of many successful citywide campaigns to support the economic development of the restaurant industry and create a win-win celebration for both the restaurants themselves, the residents and the city of Newport Beach. So thank you very much for your time and we look forward to seeing you in the restaurants, January 21st through 26th.
Thank you, Peggy. We also appreciate the restaurant efforts, Restaurant Association's efforts at contributing to the economic vitality of the city and personally I look forward to some tasty meals.
Great. If anyone's interested, more information's on our website, NewportBeachDining.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I had the occasion to be in Washington DC last night and they are celebrating Restaurant Week this week and had the occasion to talk to the manager of the Capital Grill, who tells me that Restaurant Week increases their lunch business between 25 and 50 percent at that restaurant, which is a very busy restaurant in Washington. And as everybody knows, restaurants are our largest generator of sales tax revenue in the city, so it's a very important event, not only for the restaurants, but for the city as a whole and I encourage everybody to participate, it's going to be a great event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action or report.
Okay, we'll start with Councilwoman Gardner.
Yes, I'd like a report from the Baboa Theater Arts Foundation on the progress of the theater, to be placed, be placed on the agenda in the next meeting or two.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Daigle?
Yes, a couple of announcements. First, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their support of the Corona Mar Pool, the aquatics project, I really appreciate that. It was pretty high on my respective list and I look forward to supporting your projects, important projects to you. Other announcement is the, as you know, some of our residents in Peninsula Point and also along Corona Mar have been very concerned about the impacts of activities on the beach spilling onto their private property. And so the city is going to be having a forum on January 23, study session at 4:00 PM and the residents have been noticed and we really look forward to those of you with concerns about activities occurring in that area to join us at that time. That would be 4:00 PM, January 23 and I appreciate the manager putting together this forum, so thank you.
Councilman Webb?
Just trying to follow up a little bit on the crossing guard for Mariner School at Mariners and Rutland, if you could let, let me know when that's going to be carried out.
Councilman Hen?
I don't have anything.
Curry?
Mr. Mayor, I did have the occasion to be in Washington yesterday and this morning on personal business, but took the opportunity to speak with Congressman John Campbell and Senator Dianne Feinstein's office regarding the funding for dredging of upper Newport Bay. As you know, we have $5 million that's been in limbo in the fiscal year '06, '07 federal budget, $5 million in the Senate version and in the House version courtesy of the leadership of our two, of the congressional leadership, congressional leaders. We hope to have that money through the appropriations process, hopefully they'll probably do one more continuing resolution and get that money appropriated. We still have additional funds that need to be appropriated in the fiscal year '07, ' '08 budget. Both Congressman Campbell and Senator Feinstein have assured me that this is one of their highest priorities and that they're very focused on that. It's much more challenging now in this era of non earmarks to be able to secure funding at the congressional level, but both of them are very focused on it and the community should know and be very proud of the leadership from both Congressman Campbell and Senator Feinstein to support the city in this effort. Let me also, and let me use this opportunity to thank both of them for their support. Let me also say that the problem of vehicles for sale being parked on the turnout at Old Ford Road adjacent to the port streets has continued to, to increase and has become an issue of complaint for the community. Having discussed this now with several members in the community, what I'd like to do is request that the city manager take appropriate steps to sign this turnout for two hour parking, which should be adequate for those who are using the adjacent Bonita Canyon Sports Park, but should address the issue of people who are using it as a, use car lot on the weekends and at other points in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Solitz?
I have nothing.
I have a couple of quick items here. First of all, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to be the starter for the Orange County Marathon, which took place this past Sunday. They had approximately 13,000 people participate and this is only the third year of that event, so it's really grown exponentially. Starts here in Newport Beach and finishes at 26 miles, is that right Dave? 26.4 miles or something? Two, two, 20, that last two tenths of a mile, it's a killer. In the Irvine Spectrum, I think they had a pretty good time, I don't, it wasn't a world record time, but I think better than they expected as far as, and it was an American actually who won, even though they had 30, 30 Kenyans came to run in that race, if you could believe it, but we still had an American, I think from. Moro Bay. Moro Bay somewhere, South County. Moro Bay, somewhere South County. And also, the women's winner was an American as well. So my hats off to Coach Sumner and Scott Baugh, the chairman of the Marathon Committee, for bringing that great event to our city. The second thing is, I'd just like to mention that fundraising is still continuing for the city centennial memorial that's gonna be constructed at Fadden Plaza down by the pier, and that if you're interested in participating in that, there's opportunities for recognition there, plaques, and certainly if you have, I think, fifty thousand dollars burning in your pocket, you'll get a really big plaque on there. So
It's a piece of granite.
Granite. Well, granite plaque. Okay, granite plaque. You'll be cutting stone for the next hundred years. And so if you'd like to participate in that, I believe you can probably call City Hall at six-four-four-three-thousand, and they'll be able to steer you in the right direction. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items one through eight and supplemental item fifteen and sixteen are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilman Hen, anything you want to pull? Any?
No, I don't.
Councilman Curry?
No items.
Mayor Protem?
I have nothing.
Councilman Webb?
I have none.
Councilman Daigle?
None, thank you.
Councilwoman Gardner?
If we're gonna make a change on the number five appointments, do we have to pull that one?
I'll pull that.
Okay.
Okay, I am going to pull item number five and item number sixteen, which I would like to continue to another meeting. Item sixteen, that is. Sixteen will be continued, and five will be pulled. Anybody from the audience, or, well, the staff that would like to?
No items from staff.
Audience?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year.
Good evening.
Item number five, but you're pulling that. Item number seven and item number eight, please. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Just I'll move for approval to be a consent calendar with the exception of five, seven, and eight, and the continuation of sixteen.
Second, anyone?
Second, thank you.
All in favor? Mike, got a vote?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll proceed with item number five. I pulled that. My only reason for pulling it was I'd like to make a couple of minor changes. On number one, P, I am now informed that that committee has sunsetted, the Citizen Council, Citizens Ad-Hoc Committee for Marina Park Planning. Based upon our direction in the, at the time that committee was established, it sunsetted at the time the committee made its recommendations for what they thought could happen there at Marina Park, and so we will be removing that committee, or I'll be removing or deleting my request for assignments to that committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On that, I think it says that it sunsetted within a year unless the council extended it. The council did extend it. I don't know that we put a date on that, but we still have not completed the design of the Marina Park area, and it would be beneficial, I think, for us to have a committee that could help meet and work out the details for the completion of that project.
Well, I think what happened is when that presentation was made, that we appointed another committee, which just included three councilmen, yourself, Councilman Ridgway, and myself, to work on the Marina Park project. I think that was done in lieu of this Marina Park ad hoc committee.
I think Mr. Kiff was gonna enlighten us as to what we actually did.
It was pretty close to that. You did, actually, to my recollection, disband the planning committee, the larger committee, but you formed a smaller committee, not quite as small as Q, because I think Q still exists. There's a council group, but there's a smaller committee that's not on here, and I apologize, I probably should've caught that, with, for instance, a member of P.O.P., a member of the American Legion, and a member of the Harbor Commission. You may recollect forming that when, as the mayor pointed out, you took that action to sort of go down one path.
Okay, but that's not the committee that's referencing P, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so P is gone. I'm not making any appointments to a committee that's gone. If there is another committee and it needs appointments, or we affirm appointments, please bring it back at the next meeting. In addition, I'd like to make a change in V, the Santa Ana River Trails Advisory Committee. I'm gonna substitute Councilwoman Gardner as the chair of that committee and remove my name from that committee. And with those changes, I, is there any other discussion from the council?
I'll move with those changes.
Wait. Understand. Any other discussion? Okay, open for public comment?
The reason why I was bringing this up is I was kind of curious if we could go over which one of these committees are open to the public and which committee isn't open to the public, because I think that it's a new year, and maybe we could do that. And before we do that, you could also consider bringing back a committee that could be called a public outreach committee that would work with some citizens and with some council members and the fire department and the police department, because we seem to have a problem in trying to reach the public for things. And one of them was the City Hall issue. Now we've become tsunami and storm-ready without any public outreach yet, and we're gonna need to reach a lot of people so that they're gonna feel safe. And so that might be something, Mr. Mayor, that you might be innovative in trying to do, is to get a committee formed in that fashion that would really help everybody. So you might want to think about that, because that could be a way that we could all have a win-win for whatever we want to do, because we have a lot of items that are gonna need to be brought up before the city, starting from the Oasis Senior Center to the new City Hall. And, okay, A, the aviation committee, that's an open committee, correct? Anyone can attend those meetings? Dolores, could I stop you for just a moment? Thanks. Before you move on? Yeah. I'm wondering if the Media and Communications Committee might be a starting point for her first suggestion of, that would be number K. Is that an open committee? Because I was under the impression it is.
Yes.
Okay, that's an open committee. Okay, so K could be a committee that would be formed, and you could add, you know, maybe some public people if they wanted to. Otherwise, people could attend the meetings. Oh, there are public people on it? Oh, okay. Well, I don't know. See, I was told in the past that it was a closed committee. So that's why I wanted to go over this list. What, Robin, go.
Well, one other option would be that when the city clerk publishes the list, finally with the appointments on it, which does get published, we could publish, instead of going through it number by number tonight, we could publish whether it's an open or Brown Act or non-Brown Act committee.
Okay, because right now, it looks like there's nine committees that are open to the public and nine committees that aren't open to the public. And some of these committees have been on this list for a long time. And when you have an ad hoc committee, the idea behind an ad hoc committee, and Robin, please correct me, is because it's supposed to be a meeting that's closed to the public, so you don't have to do all that running around and posting everything and advertising, and you get to meet for a short duration of time, okay? But you don't get to meet for three and four and years and five years. So maybe you could look at how the Brown Act applies to some of these committees that you've had going on for a really long time, when that comes back also to us. So, thank you. I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations, Mr. Mayor, Protem.
Thank you. I would like to say, though, that although I believe that public outreach is important, I think we do an excellent job here in the city of public outreach. And I dispute your characterization of our outreach with the City Hall project, as well as the tsunami readiness. I think we did an outstanding job with the City Hall of Public Outreach, and I'll just leave it at that. So with that being said, do I have a motion?
I already made it.
Make it again. Second, all in favor?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item was number seven. Okay, seven. Dolores, I think you called that.
Why don't we let people know what this item is?
This item is Accept Assistance to the Firefighter's Grant Award.
Okay, it's to accept, it's to accept Department of Homeland Security Fire Administration assistance to firefighters for a grant of two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars in funding for fire operations and firefighter safety. And number two, to approve a budget amendment increasing revenue estimates by two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars and increase in expenditure appropriations by two-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, which includes fifty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars from the general fund, unappropriated fund balance, which requires twenty-five percent matching fund. So we got this firefighter grant award for homeland security and also had to put in matching funds. So reading that, how much matching funds did we have to put in? Just the fifty-five-thousand dollars for that? Is that what that says?
That's right.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Okay, and also on this item, I was wondering if any of that money, a lot of people in our community, believe it or not, would like to have sirens as part of a warning system. You're gonna rap the gavel at me or something?
No, just playing.
Okay, it looks like you want to.
Fine language, what can I say?
Doesn't look good, you know? You're the first mayor that's ever done that, okay?
I'm fidgeting.
All right, well, anyway, I get five minutes on this, so relax, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not gonna take my whole five minutes.
I'm still smiling.
Okay, all right. Also, and so my concern here is that a lot of people would like to have sirens in the city. That's been an issue that's been brought up for a couple of years now. And I was wondering if, I know that this money comes from homeland, you know, security, so I know we need to use it on homeland security issues, but if we ever had a homeland emergency, homeland security emergency, sirens would work in that instance. And so I think that's one way that you might want to look at some of this money. I don't know how it's allocated, okay? So I do know that Huntington Beach recently updated their siren system, and so other cities are doing that. And anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Move the item.
I move the action.
Need a second, please?
I'll second it. I just wanted to point out, I mean, it's a breathing apparatus. I don't know if you want to hear from the fire chief more of what the money's being spent on.
Would you like to give a, you got fifteen seconds.
I will tell you that it's a four-breathing apparatus, and the money is designated for that. It cannot be used for anything else. They're very specific about that, so.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
And, Mr. Mayor, the staff is going to come back in a couple of months. I think the last time this issue, as far as a siren or warning system, was before City Council. You asked staff to assess the kind of warning systems that are out there and to come back with cost estimates and make recommendations. We're gonna do that within the next couple of months.
Very good. Look forward to your presentation. Okay, we have, I believe, I have
You have a second.
Okay, please vote.
There you go.
Motion carries.
Okay, moving right along. Item number eight, Dolores, I think you called that one up as well. And I'll read the description while you're coming down. Item number eight is a preliminary design analysis for a compressed natural gas fleet maintenance shop, which I believe will be at our city yard on Superior.
Okay. Compressed natural gas. The reason why I have some concerns about this issue, and this is just a preliminary design, I'm sure we'll be getting into it more, is you know that propane gas explodes, and that's under pressure at two-hundred-and-fifty-PSI. Compressed natural gas is under pressure between thirty-five-hundred and sixty-five-hundred PSI. So that's a lot, a lot more pressure and a lot more of an explosion when and if it can occur. This will be at our city yard on Superior. And also, when you have one of these facilities, you need to open it up to the entire public, and so any vehicle can come to your facility. And we don't have any screening process available, so any person You're gonna get me nervous with that hammer, you know?
Good.
So any person can come to this, I mean, like into the city yard, and I don't, and I imagine that they're gonna be building a wall and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Another reason for our concern on this issue is because it can explode, and it's gonna be located at the city yard, which is on Superior. And if that thing explodes, we lose two of our evacuation routes, which is Newport Boulevard and Superior. So if we, for some reason, have to do this, I mean, like Mercedes is coming out with a newer diesel. We have diesel trucks. If we didn't run all of our vehicles up to Stanton and only used transfer rigs to transfer trash, we would cut back on mileage, maintenance, repairs, tires, and wouldn't have the need to turn over our single, you know, trash trucks as often. So my item here is of concern of health and safety of the emergency preparedness plan. This is also next to some convalescent hospitals right across the street. There is, you know, like a nursing home. So that is my issue on this, is health and safety. And does it really need to be here, and do we really need to do it, and why do we need to be one of the first cities to do it? Thank you, Keith, for smiling.
Thank you, Dolores. Any other public comment on item number eight?
I move the action.
I might have Dolores talk with, she can talk with Mark Harmon. The council got a full study session report on this quite a while ago and gave direction to at least start looking at this process. So Mark Harmon has all that information that should be able to answer most of your questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the city council hasn't decided that we're going to have a CNG facility at our general services yard. What this would do is, part of coming back to the city council and reviewing what that facility would look like if it was, as an option, because the air quality control district requires us, as far as heavy-duty vehicles, to go to an alternate fuel, and CNG seems like the best fuel to go to. But the first step would be, in order to come up with what the cost would be, what are the costs of maintaining those vehicles in terms of adding to our facilities to allow us the ability to do that? Once we do that, then we put it together with the package as far as what the CNG facility itself would look like, come back to the city council, and you would decide whether you want to go forward with that installation, and we would have the complete package as far as what the cost would be in order to implement that decision, if that's what you wanted to do.
Yes, and certainly, we are just in the review phase of this. We haven't made no determination whether to go to that type of fuel or any other type of fuel. And certainly, anything that the city did would be, would take into consideration the health and welfare of all of our residents. And so I'm sure those issues will be addressed at that time.
Mr. Mayor, just to make an observation, we would not be among the first jurisdictions who have used CNG as a fleet fuel. Major bus fleets, including Los Angeles, Sacramento, Marin County, have used CNG going back more than fifteen years now, where the tanks are loaded on the buses, they get out in traffic, they have accidents, and have never had a problem relative to safety, and certainly no problems relative to exploding. The facilities, the fueling facilities in particular, are very, very safe. And people should not go away with the impression that they are in any way unsafe.
Thank you. We have a motion. A second, please vote.
Motion carries.
Moving along, I think that's all of our consent calendar items. Move along to public hearings. Item number nine, Madam Clerk?
Cole Center, Newport Beach, four-four-five-zero MacArthur Boulevard. This is a general plan amendment number two-thousand-six-zero-three, a general plan amendment to increase the total gross area of general office in anomaly site one of the airport area, statistical area L four of the land use element by twenty-four-thousand-and-sixteen gross square feet.
Staff report. Dave, are you giving the staff report?
Mr. Mayor, yes, David LePo. Mayor, members of city council, some of this may look familiar to a few of you. This was substantially the same amendment that was before the city council, and in fact, was approved back in October before the voter adoption of, or voter approval of the new general plan. As indicated, this is a proposal by Pol Company, Coal Company, to allow them to build a twenty-one-thousand-square-foot office center after, adding an additional twenty-four-thousand-sixteen gross square feet of allowable building area to section the statistical area L four of the general plan. As we've indicated, that particular area is governed, as far as development, by a planned community text, which was amended some years back, even before the nineteen-eight general plan, that would allow this additional amount of development of twenty-four-thousand square feet on this office site A, as indicated in the general plan amendment. And I'm not sure about the history of this, even this previous approval predated me here. It was not included in the new general plan, so this request would add additional square footage and bring the general plan essentially into conformity with the existing zoning or the PC text that's out there. We've done the analysis on We've done the analysis on charter section 423. There are no impacts or no additional trips beyond the hundreds at peak hour. In fact, they're 42 in the morning and 41 in the evening, so there's no vote required on this general plan amendment. Other minor clarifications here in terms of additional area that was discovered, or it was discovered that there was less actual building area out there built than was included in the general plan, so there's a concurrent reduction in the amount of buildable area in the office site area B out there. Was a negative declaration that was adopted back in October. Planning Commission, again, September, recommended your approval. So again, this is bringing back this substantially the same amendment that was approved by council in October. Any questions? I can answer those for you.
Questions, this council?
She's knocking, isn't she? I went back and looked at the minutes from the meeting where this was approved, because I had some questions. And the minutes are, of course, never quite answer everything, but it seemed like there was no discussion from the minutes. And that surprised me, because I, when I read the, for example, the planning commission minutes from September 7th, 2006, and said, there are statements in the original adoption language resolution adopting the 1988 land use element that says there was an intent to make reductions in land use approvals. We've had two land use elements and the new general plan, which didn't include this. And so I'm, I'm a little confused that staff has said, well, it was always intended or it was an oversight, which was sort of the gist that I got from this. So could I, you could explain that a little bit more, please, for me?
Well, you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the history on that, I may have to defer to Ms. Wood on that one, and maybe she could fill in some of how that happened in past years.
We had a discussion on this back when they made the application in October, and there is some indication in the original resolutions that indicated that there was an intent to make some reductions in square and floor area, but there was no indication on this particular parcel that that was intended, or that, it really wasn't clear from the record in 1988 that there was an intention to reduce it below the amount that was authorized in the planned community text. What we did was, is we basically directed them to make it clear, even though it's an oversight, we made the determination that, at a staffing level, we couldn't conclude that they didn't need to do a general plan amendment. But the original amount of square footage was in the PC text and has always been assumed to be there, at least from a kind of planning point of view, all that time.
Isn't part of what we were doing, we're going off a 1988 estimate that may not have been accurate? As I understand it, and as we update our PC texts, we're supposed to log in those same numbers onto the general plan, and that's not, at some point, somebody didn't put the numbers in the general plan, too. So it was really estimates that weren't up to date? Is that correct?
It appears that that was what occurred with the 1988 land use element. The PC text, as Mr. LePo indicated, had already been amended to provide this amount of development entitlement, and it was somehow missed in that general plan. And I think it would have been better if we had included it in the 2006 general plan, but neither staff nor the property owner remembered to do it. So here we are with another approval of what you did a few months ago.
Okay. So moving forward, we're setting up more of a GIS system, so we can add in all these things and changes to public works and so on?
Yes. We are improving our record keeping, so hopefully this will be done more automatically in the future.
Very good. Anyone else?
Well, I had some issues with the mitigations.
Okay.
All right. On page 4-5 of this independent document, measure 3.16-1, new landscaping shall incorporate drought-tolerant plant materials and drip irrigation systems wherever possible. It seems to me, after our study session this afternoon, that we should be talking about smart controllers here. And the second one right after that, mitigation measure 3.16-2, that water leaving the user's property due to over-irrigation of landscape should be minimal, it should be zero, and that they should come out if there's any coming off. That's our, it's been our goal.
Again, Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest is that's certainly going to be something that we will carry forward in the future. This document was prepared sometime back, in fact, the mitigated negative declaration was adopted back in October by resolution. The staff report indicates otherwise, but that's not the case.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The mitigated negative declaration was adopted back in October.
So we can't change it?
Well, you know, I suppose you could.
All right. Well, I just make suggestions, and the other part of it is, we talk about impervious surfaces, and we never talk about permeable paving and that sort of thing. All these things, I thought, that we, as a city, were encouraging, and yet they don't appear in these documents. So maybe we can't do it now, but we should be doing it. These should be included. These should be issues every time, particularly for mitigated declarations where we're saying, oh, there's no environmental issue.
Again, I would recommend that, since this has been noticed, circulated, and was previously adopted in October, that we not change it without coming back and re-advertising the document again. But I made note of your concerns, and we'll certainly take care of it in the future.
Can we just send a notice or a letter to the applicant indicating this is what our desires might be, and ask them to please comply with that if they feel they can?
If that's what council wants to do, yes, sir.
Anyone else?
I would move the item with Don's letter of advice to the applicant.
Second. Okay. Let's open it up for public comment. Anyone from the public like to comment on this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Carol McDermott, representing the Cole Company, and I would just like to agree that, with the staff presentation, that this was a bookkeeping complication that we're trying to clear up. And as to the desire to use the smart controllers, they'd be happy to. With regard to the change in the previous services, because it's part of a large master-planned community, if you will, and that there's, this all connects to a larger area of pavement, it would be difficult to do that without being inconsistent with the rest of the community. But as to the sprinklers, they would be very happy to add that into the plan.
Half alope.
And we'd be happy to answer any other questions you have. Otherwise, we would respectfully request your approval of this application.
And I think the city's incentive program is we're offering them free or rebate.
Well, in Newport Coast.
Newport, okay.
Yeah. But we would appreciate it if they would try and help us out with that.
We will be happy to.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Madam Clerk.
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Anyone that would like to make a public comment on a non-agenda item? Please come forward.
I've appeared before this council before, and Mr. Webb was mayor at that time, and I said if we did not reach a compromise on what I have to offer, I would see Newport in court. Well, I'm almost true to that fact, because to this date, nothing's been done on Bellbo Island to address the ADA parking. First of all, the only spot you have is not ADA compatible. The curb is too high, and I was informed by city staff that they cannot lower the curb. But if you have one space, it must be wheelchair van accessible. And I have a paper here from access board, which would substantiate what I have to say. So I would welcome the council to read what I have, an opinion from the access board. It says if you have parking for the public, you must provide equal parking for disabled. You have four spaces reserved for golf carts, and you have one space reserved for the handicap, near the fire station. And that is not handicap accessible, van accessible, because I tried to park my van there, and I was not able to get the ramp out because the curb was too high. So I've asked for more spaces to be located on Bellbo Island. I was told by staff that if I pursued this matter, you would remove the one and only handicap parking that I have available. And I don't appreciate that, because I think it's required, because it's next to the fire station, and it is required according to the voting law. So I would welcome you to read the opinion of the access board, which I have here for every council member, and determine if you want to pursue this matter. I have a claim here, I would like to submit to the city if that is appropriate. If it's not appropriate, I will come back and submit it during business hours. But I have a claim against the city for $30,000, and I know it probably will be rejected, but as a formality, you'll go to court. So I told Mr. Webb that I would see the city in court if nothing was done. Nothing's been done, so I will see you in court. Would it be appropriate to put the claim in for the city now, or do you want me to come back?
City attorney, is that appropriate?
The city clerk accepts the claims if he has one drafted. You can give it to her now if he wants.
Okay.
She doesn't have the ability to stamp it as received until tomorrow.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Pike? We don't have the ability to stamp it received now, but she will do that tomorrow. Certainly, it's not our goal to not be handicap-friendly in our city, and I can't explain the comment of the staff. It certainly wouldn't be my way of handling that, and we will look into that matter, especially now that we have your claim. Thank you. Anybody else for public comments?
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach. And some of you might know that for the past 10 years, one of my biggest dreams has been to have an emergency preparedness and disaster program for the city. And I've spent the past couple of days having some wonderful dialogue with our new fire chief, Mr. Lewis, who's been very courteous and kind. And we've been going over the tsunami-ready and storm-ready application. And I was under the impression that the National Weather Service, on their application on the web, it says that you have to have public outreach. And so I was under the impression that that had to happen before you got the, it's not certification, it's declaration. So anyway, evidently, it doesn't have to happen beforehand. Although I was also told by some of the council members, I think including you, Mr. Mayor, that they actually have met with numerous homeowner associations in the city. And so needless to say, I asked a lot of people in the community, and they never met, so our city, our fire department, our tsunami department, whatever you want to call it, hasn't met with Central Newport Association, Lido Sands, West Newport Homeowner Association, D'Anza Mobile Home Park, the Peninsula Point Association, Harbor Hills. So I'm sure that these things are going to be happening in the future, because I think it's wonderful that we've put together a plan, and part of the plan is to have the public involved, and that's a major component of any plan. And if you don't have the public involved in the plan, then you don't have a plan. And I know that Councilmember Hen remembers what his daughter went through on June 14th, 2005. And one of the things we're supposed to do, besides designate the tsunami routes, is we're supposed to let the people know, okay, where they're supposed to evacuate to. Designate and establish tsunami shelter areas and a safe zone. And I have asked where those areas are, and I've asked some of you where they are, and you didn't know either. So I would hope that we would find that out. And next week, next Tuesday, everybody out there, come down to City Hall at 6:00, because it's one of the most important meetings that you will be attending, because it can save your life, and you need to show up here. And I received this from John Heffernan today, and so I just wanted to read this. I would, he would like to ask again, if the Newport Beach Fire Department gets a call tomorrow at 10:05 a.m., or if we have a call tonight at 10:05 p.m., that a tsunami wave is on its way, and they have 1.5 hours to alert and get anyone, everyone off the peninsula, what are the precise lists of steps that the Newport Beach Fire Department and Newport Beach Police Department would employ to do so, since Newport Beach is now declaring to the world that our residents here in the city of Newport Beach are ready to deal with this type of a disaster? As an example, again, how would they evacuate the 300-plus students that are at Newport Elementary School? Part of the preparedness that was set in the application given to the National Weather Service was that they went to the elementary school. So I would hope that they have gone to Newport Elementary and told them how they're going to be getting out. Anyway, thank you for your time and your lack of attention. I know this isn't important to some of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. And please extend our thanks to former Councilman Heffernan for his comments as well. Anybody else in the public that would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, planning, or oral reports from City Council on committee activities. You'll notice a change in this agenda item. In the past, we've listed it, like, a half a dozen committees. Most of them didn't meet on a regular basis. And so I think, at my instruction, the city clerk has now changed this item, so we will entertain oral reports to the extent that council members feel that it's necessary to make a report on any committee activity that's occurred in the last, since the last council meeting. So going, is there anybody that would like to make a report? Seeing none?
Hold on.
Yes?
Yeah, I'd just like to report that the General Plan Implementation Committee, we're gonna hold our first meeting January 17th at 3:30, and where's it gonna be?
City Council Conference Room.
City Council Conference Room. And so that'll be our first meeting.
Thank you. Councilwoman DeGel?
Yes, I just wanted to report, as the city's representative to SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, that they did issue their Regional Housing Needs Assessment or RENA. And so the city of Newport Beach and other cities have an allocation. And based on the numbers that we had before today, we thought that that number was high. We were getting some revised numbers this afternoon. But our staff will be going to SCAG Thursday to provide some testimony. There is an appeals process, and we'll continue to follow up with that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving along to Planning Commission Agenda and Oral Status Report. Dave, are you giving that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, the items that were considered last week by the Planning Commission are in, report in your packet. The first one was approval of a use permit and a modification permit and a lot-line adjustment for properties on 31st Street that would enable the construction of four attached buildings. It's a mixed-use project, commercial on first floor, residential above. As we've indicated in the staff report, the use permit was to exceed the base height limit. The modification permit was to allow parking spaces under the building to encroach into the rear yard setback, and a lot-line adjustment to create four equally-sized lots from what otherwise were unequal lots. The applications were approved on a vote of four to two. A couple of the commissioners had some concerns that the expression of the building and the configuration and the potential for kind of local neighborhood retail on the first floor wasn't as good as it might be, although it did comply with the specific plan for Canary Village, which was, in fact, one of the direct policies in the new general plan. So again, that one was approved. Newport Beach Brewing Company, this was a continuation of several previous hearings for possible consideration of revocation and/or revision of an existing use permit for the service of distilled spirits at the Brew Pub on Newport Boulevard. This has gone on for some time. There've been claims by residents, and new mixed-use projects have been built, particularly across from the parking lot for the brewing company, complaints about fights, public intoxication, sexual activity, you name it. As a result of the previous hearings, the police department As a result of the previous hearings, the Police Department and Code Enforcement Staff both did extensive investigations and undercover work out there and didn't find any basis for finding that the Brewing Company was not complying with the terms and operating conditions in their use permit. Uh, the recommendation to the Planning Department was that, you know, they couldn't suggest any specific changes. However, the good part is the hearings before the, uh, Planning Commission, particularly the August hearing, did send a wake-up call to the owners and we did even in fact have residents that I talked with admit that since August, the operation had changed significantly. There were new security details there. The queuing procedures had changed when there were lines outside. And in fact, neighbors did admit the operation had improved significantly. Those changes were memorialized in revised conditions for the use permit and after admonishing the operators, they needed to continue to comply with the conditions of the use permit and be good to the neighbors. The Planning Commission did vote unanimously to allow the, um, the brewery to continue operating under the same operating hours as they do now, which is till 1:00 in the morning.
How is that received by the neighbors?
Well, at the meeting, you know, there were a couple of neighbors that did get up and testify. It was really in conversations I'd had with a couple of neighbors prior to the meeting that they indicated that there had been a lot of improvement. Uh, since that time, we did get another complaint right after that, on Saturday evening, which again, we've had the Police Department ask them to investigate on the report log and in fact, had sent an officer to the parking lot at the brewery on, uh, Saturday evening, only to find that what had been reported as a fight with two people could not be confirmed. The police did respond. I know we, there was some testimony before though, you know, if you call the Police Department, they don't respond. We've found that that's never been the case. They always have responded. Uh, in fact, in this particular call on Saturday night from one of the residents that we had spoken to before the Planning Commission meeting, um, the police responding, and I did talk to both the chief and the, the vice officer today, um, they did see a couple of people that were in the parking lot that appeared to be nice, normal citizens and they questioned, you know, if they had seen anybody coming or going, any fights and, you know, these people had nothing to gain or lose, said, no, we didn't see anything. So, uh, we're going to monitor it. We are setting up meetings with the other eateries in the area because we did come to realize that, you know, they're all going to sink or swim together. So we want them to take the initiative and work with the residents and do everything they can to make sure everybody's well behaved. There are going to be incidents, everybody recognizes it's a mixed-use area, but because we're going to be seeing more of that now with more mixed uses allowed in the new general plan, we want to be out front and on top of it. So we will be reporting back to you on our proactive measures to that end.
Leeds training?
I'm sorry?
Leeds certification or whatever it is, isn't it Leeds, L-E-E-D-S as far as?
Oh, yes, that's the training, the, oh, gosh, licensee, it's a training program through ABC, that's something, licensee education and, yeah, it's essentially, you train the employees of anyone holding, uh, an ABC license in what the proper means are for screening, for serving, you know, what you do if you have someone you believe is over served, you're controlling unruly customers, all those good things. That is a required condition of approval for that and they have complied. We do have evidence that they have complied with that. Yes, ma'am. Item number four, McCloskey Residence. This was a variance to exceed the 1.5 floor area limitation for single-family home in the R-15 district. Uh, was an awful lot of discussion. This is a property on Balboa Island for a complete redo. However, two of the commissioners voted against it because they just didn't like the idea that, uh, third stories are being allowed on the island, even though that is fairly typical. So it was their way of sending a message that maybe we ought to look at that in the Item number five, Zalbistro. This particular application is up in the New Court Bridge area. There was an existing restaurant there, the name which escapes me, it's gone out of business, sorry? Somas?
S-O-M-A.
Somas, S-O-M-A. Okay, uh, Zalb is apparently trying to open a new restaurant there and the previous space occupied by Somas. Uh, they didn't need a use permit for the restaurant, they didn't need a use permit for the type 47 license that allows service of distilled liquor, obviously coming right after the hearing on the brewery. Uh, there was some concern about it, but there was testimony and evidence that in fact, this will be operating as a restaurant and in fact, the hours on the use permit are to 10:00 Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 Friday and Saturday. So it was approved unanimously. Everybody agreed it would be a nice addition to the city. The code amendment to Title 20 allowing one city council person to, uh, appeal any decision to zoning administrator, planning director, and planning commission will be coming to you at your next meeting. Item number seven, general plan implementation, you will be hearing that tonight. And lastly, uh, the LPC Implementation Committee appointments, as we've indicated, Chairman Cole, the Planning Commission appointed Barry Eaton, Robert Hawkins, and Michael Turg to that subcommittee.
Dave, um, item number four, which commissioner subjected to that?
I believe it was McDaniel and Turg.
Okay, thanks. Is that it? Thank you, Dave.
Next agenda item, item 11, continued business, our unscheduled vacancy on the Planning Commission. Our committee met, Councilman Selich and Councilman Webb and I, and we have narrowed down the list of, um, Planning Commission candidates to two, the first being Tim Stokes and the second being Brad Hillgren. So I will put those nominations before the council.
May I ask, uh, does anybody happen to have a complete list of the candidates that were interviewed?
That were interviewed?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, well, was those two in addition to, um, oh, hang on a second?
The city clerk might have a list. Okay.
It was, uh, Jay Myers, Charles Unworth, Brad Hillgren, and Tim Stokes. We interviewed four out of the 16 applicants.
Before we made the decision, we also discussed, uh, several other applicants that had previously been interviewed, uh, before making our decision.
Correct. Any comment from council, any other further nominations? Okay, that being said, I'll, I guess, close the nominations. Aspect, do I hear a motion?
I move we accept, uh, the nominations.
Okay, anybody from the public would like to comment on the nominations? Seeing nobody, please vote.
Motion carries.
Item, uh, 12, our agenda, Big Canyon Country Club, One Big Canyon Drive. Um, this, uh, agenda item is being removed from the calendar at the request of the applicant. Uh, I guess I'll just entertain a motion on that.
Move the action.
Second.
The reason we're removed, well, the reason we're removing it from the agenda is that it is now a moot issue with the adoption of our new general plan. Do I hear any, anybody who'd like to comment from the public? Seeing none, please vote.
Motion carries.
Uh, agenda item number 13, Planning Department Staffing and Organization. Do we have a staff report on that?
Sharon Wood is going to provide that staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, this item is coming to the city council as, um, follow-up to the evaluation of the development review and plan checking process that the council received at a study session in September. And at that time, the council directed us to return to you with a more detailed analysis of the Planning Department staffing. Uh, and as you'll recall, one of the more significant problems that was noted in the evaluation was the timeliness of, uh, plan check. Um, and we also have a similar problem with the case processing of items that go to the Planning Commission, although it's plan check that is the more serious of the problems. Um, our goal for the city is, is a four-week turnaround on the first round of, of comments and that is generally being met by both the Building Department and the Public Works Department, but the Planning Department has for some time been really struggling to do that. Both the workload and the complexity of the projects that are coming to the Planning Department have increased over the past six years, um, which is the time period that we did our detailed analysis. But we have not had the planning staff grow to keep up with that increase in the workload. Um, and this is true both in the, the plan check and zoning administrator function and to a slightly lesser extent, but also still true for the current planning and case processing function. Um, since, um, our interim planning director, David Leppo, has been here, he has instituted some changes and they are helping reduce the backlog of plan check in the Planning Department, but they're not going to be a long-term solution so that the Planning Department can stay steady with that four-week turnaround goal. So based on the, um, analysis that's provided to you in the report, we are recommending, um, a total of four new positions in the Planning Department. Three of them would be in the plan check and zoning administrator function, two assistant planners and one planning technician. Uh, and in addition, there would be one associate planner in the current planning section. Uh, and the cost of that for the remainder of this fiscal year is about $139,000. Uh, there are some other changes that we are making, um, in the department and interdepartmentally. First, uh, we will be providing more staff at the counter so that there will be more planners available to assist the public, uh, and also more planners, um, who are more experienced. Um, we're going to do more integration of the assignments, um, that we give to staff so that people will work both on plan check and on case processing. Uh, we think that this will increase their knowledge so that they can be more helpful to the public, um, do a better job on all of their work and it will also help with their professional development and, and help us keep good employees. Uh, we'll be revising the job description for the planning technician. Uh, in the past, that's been the first step in the planning series, but in fact, um, it has not led to, to promotions for many of the people. Um, so what we will do is take it out of that series and require some education in drafting or architecture so that we're getting people who know that it's, um, a plan check and counter kind of position and they have the proper training for that. Uh, and finally, to address the coordination issues throughout the development review and permitting process, the city manager has decided on restructuring this function within the city and an assistant city manager, that would be me at the moment, um, will be supervising the, uh, the building department as well as the planning department. Uh, and we're still working on the details of, of exactly how this will work, but, um, we'll also be having the, the public works and fire department staff who work on the permitting process be brought into that, um, supervisory, um, arrangement for the work that they do on development review. Uh, and then the last recommendation, uh, in this report is with regard to document imaging. Planning Department needs to retain and refer to an awful lot of records over time. We used to have them on microfiche and recently, getting ready for document imaging, we haven't been microfishing them and stacks and stacks of boxes are piling up. It doesn't contribute to a professional environment. It makes the planners less efficient. So, uh, we have obtained some, um, vendor proposals to do the document imaging. That cost estimate is $149,000 and because it will also involve a lot of staff time to ensure the quality control, we want to spread that over three years. So the budget amendment that we are recommending this evening is for $50,000 for the first phase of that. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Of these four positions, what percentage of their time is going to be spent on plan
I would guess about half.
So in essence, we're hiring two plan checkers and two planners to do other stuff and you're going to be moving them around, but in essence, that's what we're doing?
Well, I, you know, I would say half for, um, the three that will be in the plan check and zoning administrator function. Um, and then the person who will be in the case processing, probably less time on plan check and more time on cases going to the Planning Commission.
In terms of the net gain, net increase of plan check though, isn't some of the planners that are currently doing plan check, they'll devote less time to plan check and more time to cases? I mean, I'm trying to understand what the net gain in plan check, check is.
They, they will be doing some time on cases, but at the same time, one of the other changes that we're making is that the, the existing staff we have that provides the staff to the Planning Commission on the case processing will be doing the plan check on their own projects. So a planner will have a project cradle to grave. So that will relieve some of the burden from, um, the people who have previously done only plan check. And, you know, we can, we can adjust assignments as the workload changes and as we see how it works. I, you know, there's no formula that's going to tell a person, you will work 20 hours a week on this and 20 hours a week on that.
Sharon, I think the existing plan checkers are going to be spending more of their time on plan check because we're going to have some people spending a lot more time at the counter to where they won't be called off so that they will have more focused time and more lengthy focused time to deal with the plan checks and not always be interrupted. So that's one of the things we're trying to do is get away from those interruptions and make sure that they just aren't going back and forth all the time.
Sharon, can you summarize again what the benefit, from the perspective of the applicant, what the customer service benefit should, is that they should expect in terms of time, reduction in terms of processing, in terms of process, all of that, from a customer service perspective? How is this going to impact our ability to process applications?
Well, I, I think the first thing is when, when an applicant or a property owner comes in and just has questions about what can I do with my property and if I want to do this, what kind of an application do I need to file? There will be more people at the counter to answer those kinds of questions and there will be more experienced people to answer those questions. So they should be able to get that kind of information more quickly and, and more accurately without having to go upstairs and talk to someone else. Uh, and then secondly, when, when they submit their applications, um, thinking of a homeowner, if they need to have a modification permit, um, we're going to have a team of, of two people devoted to that only. So it will be the zoning administrator and one of the assistant planners will be assisting him. So we'll have the same two people working on that all of the time. Um, I think with the addition of the staff and, and some of the reassignments and having all the planners work on their own plan check, we should be able to meet that four-week turnaround the same as the other two departments. Not immediately because we need some time to do the recruitment, to fill these positions, to train the new people and still to catch up with the backlog, but I think once, um, we get past that period of three or four months or so, we should start meeting the four-week turnaround time.
Sharon, I have a, are you, are you done? I have a question, a bit of history here. It's clear from the information that you've given us that, uh, it's been a long time since there's been a staff increase in these critical departments, uh, at least since 2001, although you've documented large increases in volume and complexity of some of the processes. Why was it that we waited this long to increase the staff capability here?
Well, initially, um, we were, I think, doing the, the usual government thing of, well, this is just a peak, um, and we're, we're not going to need this level of staff for a long time. And if you hire people and then the level of development activity drops off and you need to, to cut back, now you have really not been kind to a person's career by hiring them for just a short period of time. Um, and then after that, I think it just became, um, an issue of not being able to get to the analysis that was needed to justify it because we had come to the council before and, and done some more minor increases in staffing without this detailed level of analysis. And we were not comfortable coming back again and saying, uh, we think that two or three or whatever the number would be appropriately. We wanted to give you a quantitative analysis this time.
And, and it's not a good excuse, but I think it is a reason. We, we got caught up in the general plan effort also and I think that, you know, made us get away from looking internally at the department, just trying to move that effort along. Okay. I had another question. Uh, you talk about the reorganization of the departments that's in process. And so I assume you'll be coming back to us sometime soon then with a more full discussion about the overall reorganization of the, uh, departments. Is that true?
Yes.
And then you sort of raise an expectation that that may lead to more efficiencies. It's easy to interpret the word efficiency as less staff. Is that a possible outcome of this more efficient reorganization? And how does that square with adding more staff right now?
I, I don't think that it will, you know, increase in efficiencies so that each person on staff will be able to, um, process more projects. Uh, I think that the efficiency will be seen by the customers if there is better and earlier coordination between the departments. So the applicant doesn't go to one counter and say, well, that's all right with me, but you better go over to this other department and check with them. And then they're get, getting told a different story and they aren't even sure which way to draw their plans. So if we can get, um, ourselves more So if we can get ourselves more coordinated at the front end, I think that that will help our applicants.
So you're talking about efficiency from the perspective of the customer experience?
Yes.
And the process.
Just one question, something I'm curious about. I kind of follow those recruiting reports we get, and it seems like it's going to take us at least 90 days to get staff on, and you're asking for five months' worth of budget money here.
Well, we actually have started these recruitments in anticipation of the council approving these. We have not made any offers, so we will be able to move more quickly than usual on at least some of the positions.
That's good.
Yeah, I authorize that by going out on a limb, but thinking that, you know, thinking that we would be successful at getting some positions, let's go ahead and start the recruiting process and try and eliminate as much time as possible in coming up to speed.
Yes, given that our residents want permits and businesses, you know, retailers want tenant improvements and commercial office space and so on, it makes sense to add resources, particularly when it's fee-based. What is the status of our fee recovery? Do we have a billing system? I mean, because I was reading in the report that a lot of fees were being captured, but, I mean, for what? How is this being tracked?
Not especially well at the moment, and that is among the things that we are working on. But we do have two types of fees in our system. For projects such as modification permits, where the average amount of time that staff needs to spend on it is fairly constant, we have a fixed fee, and so an applicant just pays that fee at the beginning of the process, and that's it. For more complicated projects, use permits, variances, general plan amendments, zoning amendments, we charge an hourly fee. So, an applicant gives us a deposit at the beginning of the project, and as that money is used up, we ask them to give us more money, and then there's a reckoning at the end of the process. But it's the staff members tracking the time that they actually spend and keeping up with getting the deposit replenished, that we don't have the system in place as well as it should be, and that's among the things that Mr. Leepo was working on. In addition, the current fees that we are using were prepared by me personally, and I am very happy that we now have a consultant doing an overall fee schedule, because I will be more comfortable with those fees when they're done professionally.
Okay, great. So it sounds like areas that we're looking at. And then my other question is, that's good that plan checks are getting out in four weeks in the first round, but what I noticed is that there's lots of iterations, and the numbers of rounds of correction are increasing, so that could be frustrating to applicants where they feel as if the first round, you weren't catching all the corrections, and, you know, we down the line. So how could we maybe still keep within that four-week turnaround, but have a more comprehensive review within that four-week timeframe? Any suggestions on that?
What I have been learning from the staff in all the departments is that the principal reason for that is that the applications that are coming to us are not complete. The design community is just as busy as we are, and the design professionals can tell their client that I have submitted to the city. It might be a 70% complete submittal, but it's a submittal, and then that client kind of stops complaining for a while. But what we are going to do to help with that is establish checklists for any, every kind of submittal and have that available to the public so they know exactly what it is that we are looking for. And we're also looking into having a staff person assigned to screening applications as they come in, and we won't even let them cross our counter if they aren't complete so that we don't have these iterations.
Yeah, that's a good point. What's been happening is it's taking us, and planning, maybe five or six weeks even to get to the application, and it's incomplete. So after that time, you turn it back, and it may be another five or six weeks, you know, when you see it again. But a lot of times, the submittals are submitted knowing that they're incomplete and saying, "Well, I submitted it to the city," and, you know, they're kind of using, you know, the length of time for themselves in getting to it.
Okay. So we would have then a kind of a submittal checklist, you know, "Here's your signature, here's your public notice, here's your check," and so on.
And we won't accept the plans unless we think that they are complete.
Okay, any other comment from council?
If I could just say one more thing, in accordance with the response to Councilman Hen, we are going to be coming back within the next couple of months with the detailed explanation and step-by-step of the process that we have developed, and also all of the improvements that we've tried to implement, and put that together, and certainly let you know what that whole package is.
Thank you. Anyone from the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none.
Move the action.
Any other comment? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. Current business, item 14, General Plan Implementation Resolution Establishing the Interim Development Review Process.
Regular mayors will provide the staff report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Before you tonight, it's a draft resolution that provides interim development review procedures during the timeframe that we're updating the zoning code as a result of the adoption of our general plan and its approval by the voters in November. What I'm going to do is just briefly summarize a couple of the main points of this resolution and these procedures for you tonight. The first thing this draft resolution does, it would require all new developments and uses to be consistent with the general plan, including floor area ratio densities and all general plan policies that would be applicable to the property. There are two exceptions to that. One of those is it allows projects that received discretionary approvals prior to February 7th, so basically under the old general plan and the old zoning or the current zoning, to move ahead and be permitted in accordance with the conditions of their approval. The other exemption is it exempts single unit and two-unit developments with complete applications in for plan check prior to April 1, 2007. At the last city council meeting where this item was discussed, the council directed staff to proceed with some residential development regulations for the single and two-unit developments, and to have those back to the council by April 1, so those would be exempt for the time being. The bulk of what the resolution does, though, is it addresses the most problematic situation that the adoption of the general plan created as far as development review goes, and it establishes a legislative procedure for the review of developments and uses allowed by inconsistent with the general plan but inconsistent with the current zoning code. This would be applicable in all cases, but there is an exception. Planned community districts would be accepted from this procedure. We're thinking that during this interim period, any projects that would go forward that are allowed by the new general plan but inconsistent with planned communities would simply go through the route of applying for a planned community tax amendment, which is basically a code amendment. So they would revise, they would, the applicant would propose development, new development regulations for their properties through a PC amendment. Now, briefly, the interim plan, the interim development review plan that we have recommended for you tonight, which was also recommended by the planning commission, the first thing it requires is the applicant request and obtain approval of a code amendment to apply the interim study overlay district designation to the property. Now, part of this application that the interim study overlay designation allows, which is currently in our existing zoning, that's chapter 2053, it requires a submittal of a study plan, and this study plan would establish all development regulations for the property, and it would also have to provide for the implementation of all applicable general plan goals and policies. Another provision in regard to the study plan approval, the draft procedures would allow the city council at its discretion to require a development agreement for any of these proposed projects. Staff thought it would be appropriate, since the interim study overlay chapter is kind of a, and the related study plan is kind of a broad and general chapter, we, in our draft procedures, we included four findings that we thought would be valuable to be made prior to the approval of the code amendment and the accompanying study plan. First, of course, would be implement and be in compliance with the policies of the general plan. The second one would be to conform to any applicable design guidelines that are on the books now. For example, the Mariners Mile design guidelines and framework that you may be familiar with, I believe McDonald's was reviewed closely under those a couple of years ago. So those design guidelines would have to be implemented and included within the project. The other finding would be that the project would have to demonstrate that any change from the existing zoning regulations that are on the property, any change from those are justified by the benefits of the plan. So in other words, it's good project design. If the zoning code says, you know, the setbacks are X number of feet, the proposed project proposes a smaller setback or a different setback, then the project would be reviewed for, it makes common sense, makes good planning sense to allow that type of change. And finally, the last finding would have to be that the project would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the city residents or workers. And briefly, that's the outline of the proposal, and we're available for any questions.
Any questions of council? Councilman Selig.
Yeah, could you address the three concerns that the planning commission raised and what the answer to those concerns are? I guess one is the regard to the conforming status of projects, once a new zoning code is approved, and then the removal, the suggestion that we remove the restriction of modifying height limits, and then the discussion on development agreements.
Yes, with, in regard to the conforming status of projects, when we update, when we go through the process of updating the zoning code, we think that that might be a more appropriate time to look at the conforming nature of any projects that may go through this process. We may find, as, for example, in Mariners Mile, if the project comes through, it ultimately gets approved through this process on its own merits through discretionary approval, we may find that during the course of the update of the zoning code, and looking at Mariners Mile overall, that those, we come up with different development regulations. Now, if that's the case, there's a couple of options down the line that we could take. One is to maybe exempt those projects and say, "Well, they're not conforming, but since they were approved through this interim study overlay, and at the time, they were perceived to be a good project, or maybe they are a good project," maybe not have the nonconforming status apply, or if we believe that the development regulations that are ultimately adopted are far superior, then we can say, you know, "Okay, you got your project, you came through with the benefit of applying for your project before the zoning regulations were updated, you're simply a legal nonconforming project and property, and any legal, or any nonconforming provisions that are adopted as a result of the zoning code update would apply to your project." I'm not, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's a couple of options that we're thinking on how to address the nonconforming. The commission was worried about basically a project being nonconforming that's approved through this process.
I would see that as we go through and deal with the rewrite of the zoning code, that we would work any projects that are in process together with that zoning code and somehow so that we don't come out with nonconforming projects, that either we modify the zoning regulations, or we have a specific set of zoning regulations for a specific piece of property, do something like that so we don't have nonconforming projects as a result of being able to implement the general plan concurrently with rewriting the zoning code.
We can definitely do that. I mean, given the timeframe of what our goal is to rewrite the zoning code, and, you know, I'm not sure when we might start seeing these projects, but, you know, maybe a month, maybe a couple of months, you know, we can kind of run them concurrently. That's definitely, definitely a possibility.
I can't imagine any major projects getting through, you know, any faster than the zoning code getting done, at least at this point.
You're probably right. Moving on, in regards to the height limits, some of the, I guess, three of the commissioners thought that anything should be fair game at this point, since we are going through and doing a comprehensive update of the zoning code based on the new general plan. It was the feeling of a couple of the others that, and staff, of course, that height is one of those things we really want to take a close look at. We have the shoreline height limitation that's in place right now. That's not part of the code technically, but it's referred to by the code. So we thought height was one of those, was one of those development regulations that we wanted to take a close look at and not have any varying height limits down the line. Again, I guess if, you know, we could look at some projects concurrently with height if we, if the commission and the council thought it'd be okay to consider any of these projects that come in with the proposed interim study overlay, if we want to consider looking at any height variations to what's on the books now. Development agreements, the procedures allow for the council at its discretion to require development agreement for any projects that come in, requesting interim study overlay. I think there was concern among at least one or two of the commissioners, based on some testimony given that night, that the applicant might kind of be stuck with a requirement for a development agreement after they've been in process for a few months or down the line when they're out of hearing. Staff thinks that maybe our general plan and LCP committee implementation committee can look at these projects as they come in, and, you know, through that committee process, which is made up of council and planning commissioners and staff, kind of decide right up front whether or not a requirement for a development agreement is appropriate for any particular projects.
Thank you. Councilman Hen.
Yes, I'd like to come back to issue number one that was of concern to the planning commission. We've selected a mechanism here that is through use of a resolution and then this interim study overlay as the mechanism to affect, you know, the governance of this. I understand that there was some concern by the planning commission about that route being chosen, and that there's another route, an emergency ordinance route that could have been selected, that might have been, involved less, I don't know, chance of challenge along the way. And so I'd like to hear some elaboration on why we selected this route and that the concerns of the planning commission might have been perhaps misplaced in that respect.
I'd like to defer to City Attorney Robin Clausen for that one.
The reason why we picked the resolution route, and this was explained to the planning commission, is that this is a, an implementation, an interim implementation procedure. It's not an ordinance in the sense of it's enacting any regulations. It's a, general plans are adopted by resolution. The implementation, the implementation process was adopted by resolution, and this is just a procedure that staff came up with utilizing existing ordinances, existing regulations to allow applicants that don't want to wait until the zoning is amended to be able to start processing a project now if they wish to. So it was my opinion, and I gave that opinion to both the planning staff and to the assistant city attorney, and it was related to the planning commission at the time, that it was my opinion that this is a perfectly legal and appropriate mechanism for establishing this process, and that I disagreed with them.
And so you're confident by use of resolution here that we're not exposing ourselves to challenge for the prohibition of a project based upon it being consistent with the general plan but inconsistent with the, so.
The problem is, is we're not, we're not doing, we're not prohibit, we are not prohibiting by this action. I mean, it references the fact that there, you can't process a project, but the general law is that you cannot process a project. You cannot get a permit under most, any discretionary or any other kind of approval for a project that doesn't comply with the general plan. If the zoning doesn't comply with the general plan, you can't change the zoning, I mean, you have to change the zoning first. So you have to do an ordinance to make some sort of change to be able to do, to do your permit.
But this isn't an ordinance.
It's not an ordinance. It's not an ordinance. They would need to, the point was that in order for anybody to process a project that doesn't comply with the zoning because it, it would comply with the new land use provisions, in order for them to do that, they would have to get a zoning amendment. But what, what staff came up with was a process to authorize them to go through this, this overlay study area instead of doing a zoning amendment to, to protect the council and the city against piecemeal zoning amendments.
Well, in essence, we have a, we already have an ordinance on the book and the resolution is a process on how to use that ordinance as an interim measure to implement the general plan till the new zoning code's rewritten.
Right. So I don't, I don't believe that we, we would not have been able to, somebody could not come in and apply for a project, a mixed-use project, say, in an area that was designated in the land use element as mixed use under the new general plan, but under the zoning, mixed use wasn't allowed and there was no zoning provisions for it. We wouldn't be able to issue them a permit for it anyway. So this resolution doesn't do anything more than that. In addition, the general plan implement, the, the resolution that the council adopted implementing that, the general plan basically declares on one of the sections that the general plan is preeminent and that there shall be no approvals that conflict with it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Sowice.
Yeah, if I might just to give the council some additional comfort here on this, the, because this implementation, general plan's so important, I kind of jump-started the, the general plan implementation committee and started having some meetings with, with staff and, and also some of the council people on the committee meeting with staff to, so this meeting on the 17th is not just starting from scratch. We've kind of got some things outlined and some goals in mind. And one of them is to get the zoning code rewrite complete by the end of the year, number one. Number two is to get the critical fee components updated this year, the fair share traffic fees, infrastructure fees, our park fees, things of that nature. And then in addition to that, because I know there's some concern, I've received calls about the development agreement provision that I think we're going to be coming back, what, the 22nd of February to the council? Is that the date we have?
27th.
27th. For a procedure on development agreements, so we'll more formalize the process on development agreements. So we, we're hoping to move ahead, you know, as rapidly as possible on this so that this truly does become just a interim process that we're working with here.
Anybody else like to comment on this item? Open it up to the public. Seeing none, do I have a motion? All in favor?
Motion carries.
Questions for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do I hear any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Are adjourned.
Alicia.